Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Jessica's statement of publication, please.
Take notice that this regular agenda meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on the sixteenth day of June 2025 has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Valka.
Here.
Kalisi.
Yeah.
Novak.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Sinarski.
Here.
The council president, approval of prior minutes.
Move the following minutes of the mayor and council be approved on roll call vote, subject to correction if necessary, the regular and agenda session, May 27, 2025.
Is there a roll call?
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Proclamation and presentations, council president.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Saraval, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the Borough of Saraval recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, I, on behalf of Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor of the Borough of Saraval, do hereby designate the month of July 25th as Parks and Recreation Month.
Take a motion.
Move that the proclamation be approved in roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Novak.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
And Mayor, before we move forward, our Parks and Recreation Director was unable to be here today. He sent me a note about receiving this. He wants, he says, "I want to extend our sincere thanks for proclaiming July as Park and Recreation Month in our community. This recognition means so much, not just to those of us who work in parks and recreation, but to the countless residents who benefit every day from our parks, playgrounds, programs, and open spaces. Parks and recreation are essential to a healthy, active, and connected community. Thank you for recognizing the role parks play in enhancing our quality of life and for helping us celebrate the dedicated staff, volunteers, and partners who make it all possible. We look forward to a fun and engaging July, and we invite everyone to get out and enjoy everything our parks have to offer."
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
With that, we come to the main event of the evening, which is from the youth of Saraval and their Shade Tree Art. So if I could get all the kids and mom and dad, take your cameras out and feel free to roam the council chamber and take these Kodak moments for all eternity. So council, if you would, will go up to the rail, kids and the Shade Tree, come on up.
If you all want to just kind of stand over on that side for right now, I'd appreciate that. Hi, my name is Heather. I'm a commissioner for the Shade Tree Commission. I'm here with Ed Grella, our vice chair, and Chris Cunios, also a commissioner. For the last few years, we've run two competitions. One is an annual art competition, and the other one is an annual poetry competition. We did get a tremendous amount of submissions this year, which we were more than thrilled to read, and so today we're going to present some awards to students that did win in our poetry contest. So, Ed, if you wouldn't mind holding them. We originally were only going to have two sets of winners, but we were just so taken aback by how many fantastic submissions that we received that we decided to pick a third set. Shh, don't tell anyone. Okay, so our, let's do third place first. Yeah, right here. So we have in third place Kareem Fields.
Okay. Okay. Second place is David C. DeSantos.
Onto the second set of three. Thank you for your patience. Our second third place winner is Abigail McCarthy. Love it. Love the energy, love the energy. And our second first place winner is Luna Martinez. Did I say that? Luna? I'm sorry, Luna Martinez. All right. And on to our third set of winners. Our third third place is Mia Alvarado. Our third second place winner is Hannah O'Halloran. And our third first place winner is Penelope Haney. I will say, we just want to get a picture with everyone and of course, mayor and council. Also, when we dismiss, if you could just meet Ed in the back, unfortunately, we don't have the gift cards with us. They're with our president who, or our chair, who is on vacation right now. So we will have to coordinate getting it to you. I'm so sorry about that. But we hope to continue to do this in years going forward, and I'll give it over to mayor and council.
Thank you, Shade Tree. As always, great job, young Saraval residents. Are you going out for pizza tonight, or did you have it before you came? You had it, okay. Okay, you had the pizza party. Well, your winners, your winners, we're very proud of you, very proud of you. You're really a testament to the good people of Saraval, which you're a big part of, and the future is yours, and we thank you very much. Smile a little bit, mom and dad are taking your picture. All right, with that, councilwoman, the councilwoman Novak is the liaison to Shade Tree, so let me give her the mic.
I just like, I'm so proud of you, kids. This is really wonderful. I'd like to thank you for participating. I'd like to thank the teachers. They're such a big part of this. And they, and they are a reflection of their wonderful parents, so thank you very much, parents also. Shade Tree is a commission that does a lot of work in town, and they not only take care of your trees, but they are also there to pass this on to the next generation, so I want to thank them again too for that.
I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I'm glad you enjoyed your pizza. I did too beforehand, and I want to thank Shade Tree for all the good things that they do in the community. Thank you.
Again, I don't want to repeat, but an outstanding job our next generation in Saraval. Thank you very much for doing what you do.
Congratulations again, good jobs. Keep it up again. I don't know, Mike, maybe we should just do it together.
Yeah, let's do it together.
But we really just want to say congratulations, what a wonderful job.
Excellent.
Thank you, Shade Tree.
All right, Ed, you go out. That's a television camera up there.
Oh, you want, okay, we're gonna get the group photo for posterity purposes.
And then we'll, all the foreign adults will stand in the back, come on.
Tall ones in the back, vertically challenged in the front.
And again, parents, if you could see Ed out in the hallway so he can get your contact.
All right, so kids, do me a favor. Hold your awards up high, be on TV, you'll be there for all eternity as you walk, as you walk. Go ahead, walk forward, go ahead. Heather, 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 send them on, send them on their way so they have a procession of, hold your plaques up, hold your plaques up over your head. J's the least. All right.
They slipped to school.
Yeah, congratulations, parents.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and borough council, the Borough of Saraval County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows: The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately ten minutes to discuss the following matters: Attorney-client privilege, contract negotiations, environmental legal counsel. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be properly brought before it at this time. The nature and content of the discussion which occurs in closed sessions shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Your motion.
I make a motion to go into closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
A motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
I'd like to appoint special counsel.
Okay.
Law firm of Maynard and Landis LLP, Albert I. Telsey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint special counsel.
Okay.
Law firm of Maynard and Landis LLP, Albert I. Telsey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
I just want to report that I received the resolution from the Saraval Planning Board following a meeting on May 21, 2025, recommending Block 174, Lots 1.01 and Lot 1.02 be designated as an area in need of redevelopment, and also another resolution received from the Saraval Planning Board from May 21, recommending Block 53.02, Lot 8, Block 54.01, Lots 1.01, 1.02, and 7, and Block 14, Lot 1, be designated as an area in need of redevelopment.
Hey, at this time, I'm gonna open questions or comments on.
Mayor, before you do that, may I just, just explain to the public on that appointment, just so it's clear.
Okay.
The appointment that was just made is for a, excuse me, a professional services appointment.[952.12]
A motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second.
Councilpersons Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint special counsel.
Okay.
Law firm of Maynard and Landis LLP, Albert I. Telsey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski. I just want to report that I received the resolution from the Saravville Planning Board following a meeting on May 21st, 2025 recommending Block 174, lots 1.01 and Lot 1.02 be designated as an area in need of redevelopment, and also another resolution received from the Saravville Planning Board from May 21st recommending Block 53.02, Lot 8, Block 54.01, Lots 1.01, 1.02, and 7, and Block 14, Lot 1, be designated as an area in need of redevelopment.
Hey, at this time, I'm going to open questions or comments on...
Mayor, before you do that, may I just explain to the public on that appointment, just so it's clear?
Okay.
The appointment that was just made is for a, excuse me, a professional services appointment for environmental, special environmental legal counsel. We will have a resolution memorializing that appointment and actually awarding the professional services contract at the following meeting, but it's for, it's relating to environmental concerns and specifically pending litigation relating to the Hercules Dunham Water System, Water Property. But the appointment will be, I just wanted to make it clear that it's not a new employee. It is a professional service, and it will be authorized or memorialized by written resolution at the following meeting. Thank you, Mayor, sorry.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public portion for questions or comments on 5A and 5B. Other questions?
No, 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 it's just reporting on the...
No?
It's supposed to be for ordinance.
Okay. Okay, I stand corrected. All right, appointments, Donna?
I have two appointments to make. I was expecting to get one more application that I did not see yet. And to the Cultural Arts Committee Commission, I'd like to appoint Kelly Esposito and Margaret Grande.
Is there a second?
No, I make a motion that her appointments are approved.
Oh, I make a motion that...
I made the motion to approve your appointments.
Okay.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Councilpersons Novak.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Resolution.
You got a second one, Donna?
Uh, no, I did not get the application.
Okay, okay. What's next? Resos? All right, at this time, I'm going to open to the public questions or comments on the resolutions. Jim. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Jim Robinson. On the agenda there is about $5 million worth of improvement. For recreational ability. Unless I ask the question, there will probably be no discussion on what those improvements are because council doesn't discuss this anymore. So when I'm done asking my questions, I would like it somebody would please explain what those various improvements are. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the redevelopment. There are a couple things mentioned, Mayor, you mentioned 5A and 5B, and then there's 171.
170.
I'm not sure what properties these are. I think one is the JCPN L, maybe Sunshine Biscuit, Hunka Bunka in there.
No.
What can you explain and think? Not everybody knows lot and block numbers, so can you tell us what these properties are?
Councilman Zabrowski, if you would go over 5A and B, please.
Or 70? 70, yeah.
5A and 5B.
So, uh... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. All right, so blocks 5302, Lot 8, Block 5401, Lots 101, 102, 7, Block 14, Lot 1, that is actually the JCPNL site. It's encompassing of that, yep. The second one is for, was, is primarily the Sunshine Biscuit property, but there is also some area that's on the other side of Journey Mill Road that's inclusive of the, for the redevelopment area is inclusive of, in that area as well, some of those blocks.
Thank you for that.
And 171, John?
That's what I just explained.
Okay, okay.
In the future, I mean, I had an idea what these were, but I know lot and block numbers because I have no life of somebody explaining a year ago. Um, you know, the planning board chairman, I know the lot and block numbers roughly now. I appreciate very much, but I'm going to suggest that when you put the agendas out, just note what the property is so that folks reading this have an idea of what you're talking about.
Yeah, we just made that suggestion.
And I want to thank you for taking a look at the old JCP, you know, site on River Road, the redevelopment site, you know, I had suggested probably going back two years, maybe longer, that you look at that. That is waterfront property. It has great potential. I hope you'll give it the attention and, you know, it's got great potential, and I hope that you look at it creatively and it'll be well thought out uses that it deserves as we've seen what's happened to most redevelopment sites. There are warehouses, warehouses, self-storage warehouses, oh, and warehouses. And let's do better on this prime piece of property that is waterfront. Let's make it something the residents can try it and that we can use it, we can enjoy something will see a benefit.
Something that will be a benefit to the entire borough of Saraval. Now, I have a question about the old Sunshine Biscuit property. And as you know, I thought that that would be a wonderful location for a school bus depot. Understand the other two that we're looking at, there are some problems with. They already parked 70 to 80 tractor trailers there without approval, so we know buses would fit, and with a pilot, they'd get a big tax break, so maybe in exchange for the pilot, they'd allow a bus depot there. Not for free, charge a reasonable rate, but, but allow it. Now, I just want to mention this, I have a question. When Arsenal came in and other folks came in and we argued against the pilot because the schools would be cheated out of money, in the case of Arsenal, out of millions, about $30 million the schools will not get because Arsenal has a pilot. And the argument was, but this is new development. They just aren't getting new money, they aren't losing old money, and they'll still be paying the property taxes on the, on the land. My question is this, if you put the JCPNL site into a redevelopment zone and you give them a pilot, because let's face it, that's why they want to be in a redevelopment zone, so they get a pilot, will the Board of Education lose money then if you go from a tax? Right now, Sunshine Biscuit pays about $730,000 in taxes, so that's roughly about $400,000 that goes to the Board of Education. They pay 730 in property taxes. If they no longer pay property taxes and they get a pilot, does that mean that the $400,000 that they are now paying to the Board of Education won't be paid? And can there be a end?
It's the same.
If that money goes up?
Stays the same.
If those bills go up?
Stays the same.
Stays the same? Stays the same flat? Well, now it goes up every year. So will it stay the same? So even that is a loss.
How much? 20 seconds, Jim.
Okay, all right, so I just want to make sure that the, that the schools will be, will be held harmless in this situation, and even, even if it stays flat, well, that doesn't hold them harmless because every year they get more because, as you know, taxes go up every year. So I'd like a, I'd like a more thorough, I appreciate that off-the-cuff answer, but I'd like a more thorough response to that. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
Yeah, and 24, I mean, 2025, 145, I'm abstaining on the Adalex bill. Yes on everything else.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Uh, yes on everything but 170 and 171. I'm going to abstain on those only because it's not that I'm not in favor of this, it's just that the, the information that we got from the planning board said that they relied heavily on the Saraville planners' report, and they said it was attached and it was not attached, so I didn't get to read it. And then our, our resolution actually says that we read all of these reports, so I don't want to say yes if I haven't read the reports.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
All right, next item.
Motion to accept the correspondence as listed.
So moved.
Second, I can't.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Novak.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor and Council reports, Administration of Finance, Councilman Falca.
Thank you, Mayor. The auditors are on site performing the 2024 audit, and other than that, progress.
Okay, planning and zoning, Councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Happy belated Father's Day to all and those that serve in that capacity as well, appreciate it. I had the real honor, speaking Father's Day, to attend the Father's Day brunch at the Epic Church by invitation by Reverend Bullock. It was actually, because the mayor was unable to do it, what a wonderful afternoon I spent with Pastor John, and I thank them for the invitation. Want to move on to, I guess, what I would call a PSA, and our construction agency recently received some complaints related to work that people do on their property, whether it's buildings or on actually their grounds. In this particular case, it was on their grounds. It had to do with actually driveways and front yards. So a couple of things. As far as the complaints are concerned, our construction agency is handling those and handling them accordingly. There is a process under which to do that. The PSA is this, if you're doing any, any work on your property, check first. Contact your construction agency so that you in fact know that what you're doing is able to be done either with a permit or permission through the various boards, whether it's Planning Board or Board of Adjustment. It'll save you a lot of time. In this particular case, when we're talking about front yards, you think, well, okay, I can probably pave my front yard if I want to. In all actuality, there's rules involved there, and the rules not to incur you or to slow you the process down or to tell you that you can't use your own property, but there's also a public interest involved as well, environmental issues, public safety, as well as your neighbors, your next-door neighbors. So I thank those that forwarded those complaints. I thank our construction agency and our zoning office for taking attention to that, and again, I put that out for a public service so that everybody can kind of make this process a little bit easier for each one of us. Secondly, I have a request to, actually, I guess it would be through the mayor or the chair for, a request for a borough planner. Recently, the planning board went through a rather long application related to a conditional use, and one of the issues was the size of the property, acreages. So I took a look at this a little bit because it's concerning as the fact that when this was changed and the reason for that. And I couldn't really come up with a reason for it, but I will tell you, the change actually took place in 1999, 1999, and it was at the recommendation of then borough planner at time hired and grew. I think it was in conjunction to the master plan, and it was a request for changing of the land use, and I'm sure it was under good reasons at that time. But times change. We're now 25, 26 years later, environment changes, laws change, court cases change, and so to take that into consideration so that in the future, there's a more clarity to it and applications will be handled a little bit differently, I'm going to make the request that our borough planner take a review of the conditional uses that are still in the, in our zoning ordinance, particular for residential areas of, I guess it would be R7, R10, and R20, where those conditional uses are at, so they could do a comprehensive review to see if in fact the changes could be done, and if they would be proper to do, if that's okay.
I have no objection.
Is that a motion?
If it needs to be a motion, I'd like to, but I don't know if it needs to be.
It does not need to be a motion unless the council wants to handle that, but if that was not instead of the motion, just to see if anyone objects, if no one objects, then we go out.
Appreciate that. And just one last thing, I apologize for talking too long. Some good news as well. Sarah had been working with businesses and residents standing in the downtown area of Saraval, right down here, and one of the issues that came up through the survey and through talking to folks was that traffic, particularly speeding, is an issue. So we tasked the commission using our several police department, Traffic Bureau, as well as our borough engineers, to put together an investigation and a report and a request to change the speed limit to 25. This had to go to our county, and our county did review that investigation, that report and that plan, and they accepted it. So Mayor and Council can expect to see a formal request from Sarah on that and probably at the next meeting, but it's not just the reduction of speed. In order to do that, we also have to do traffic calming as well. So it's a, it's a more comprehensive plan of reducing the recidivism of speeding down in that lower area, and also to protect pedestrians that are walking in that area as well. Again, I thought, I apologize for the long report, Mayor, that's my report, and thank you.
Can I ask you a few questions?
Yes.
Are we just talking third, the speed limit 30 to 25, or all the way from the beginning where it's 35?
So it'll be from the MacArthur Avenue intersection down to, what is that, Main and Washington Road? So what we consider the, I guess, the downtown proper area, yep.
And calming things, are we talking about, we're not talking about speed bumps, right?
No, no, we've, we've discussed those on a number of occasions in my previous show and yours as volunteer, we know that those things can be problematic, but what they are talking about is additional pedestrian crosswalks, additional signage as well in order to be able to, to calm that down. So thank you, Mayor, for those questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Public Works, Public Safety, rather, Councilman Calisi.
Thank you, Mayor. My first report to be relayed from the Director Bardsley of Office of Emergency Management. And OEM continues to prioritize preparedness and coordination across the community. On June 12th, OEM staff attended a full-day training synopsis at Monmouth University. They focused on enhancing emergency response capabilities and interagency cooperation. So looking ahead, OEM will be operating under a unified command post for both the middle school and high school graduations on June 17th and 18th to ensure the safety and smooth operation during these important events. Additionally, on June 28th, OEM will partner with Middlesex County OEM, the Prosecutor's Office, Saraville Police, and Fire to establish the unified command post for the community's fireworks celebration, reinforcing our commitment to public safety during large-scale events. And my next report is from Chief Plumacher. The Saraville PD continues to make progress on background checks for prospective officer candidates. Our goal, their goal remains to have all investigations completed in time for council interviews ahead of the, our next July 12th, 21st meeting. In addition to recruitment efforts, the department and PBA Local 98, they proudly participated in the 42nd Annual Special Olympics torch run. So Sergeant Steve Maslowsky served as a safety escort vehicle, helping ensure a safe route from Island Beach State Park all the way up to Perth Amboy. Their involvement reflects our department's deep commitment to both public safety and community service. Our officers also took part in the middle school career fair, engaging with students and providing insight into careers in law enforcement. Events like these strengthen our community trust and inspire the next generation to consider public service. So that's the end of the report, and I look forward to seeing everyone at our Independence Day celebration in Kennedy Park on Saturday, June 28th. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Novak.
I'd like to talk again about, starting on August 1st, we will be going to automated garbage cans for our recycling. So we will have less recycling blowing around town. I'm constantly getting reports that it, it's a shame, no matter how it happens, but I think an awful lot of our bottles and cans and milk crates and stuff that are floating around in our ponds and our streams and our parks are coming from our recycling cans. So we're very excited about this. We'll still be working, this is still going to be with the county, they are just going to a new collection service. Anytime starting in the beginning of July, you, your cans might be dropped off, the new cans, they're going to be just like our green ones, as the same size, only blue, and, but you're, you can't use them until August 1st. So I, I'll probably just keep saying that at every meeting until, until August. Also, I'd like to talk about our Flag Day services. I was a little...
Wait a minute, Jim, we can only, the mics pick up the conversations from the audience, so if you'd let one meeting go on at a time. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, Flag Day services. A lot of people don't realize that the veterans organizations in town, they, they collect everybody from all over town. You drop off your flags during the year... the year if they've been in any way damaged, and they have what they call a retirement ceremony where they burn them. I was a little late this year, unfortunately. My memo said 7 o'clock, even though I knew it was 6:00, but I figured it maybe would've been changed. So, but it really is a wonderful service. And anybody that has a flag of their own, whether it's a small one or a large one, the proper way to dispose of it is burning. And if you, there's boxes usually in front of both the Legion and the VFW to collect these flags during the year, and then they will have a service where they are all burnt. And it's really a nice service. It's behind the Legion but in War Memorial Park, so it's really nice. And I'd like to thank the veterans with all they've done, that they continue to do, and they continue to show this for the next generation. Other than that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Water, Sew, Environmental, Councilman Sinarsky.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to say is I want to thank John and their police department and everybody else for working on that Main Street prom that's existing. But I've definitely had progress. People are telling me that things have changed on Main Street as far as the parking, and people are definitely happier. So with the new speed limit changes, I definitely think that's going to be also an improvement. As far as the water and sewer goes, even though we've been getting a lot of rain, there is still, not a drought situation, but the wells and aquifers are still low. Just for example, they always say that in the spring months, we're going to be using more water. Sure enough, in March, we used 145 million, they produced 145 million gallons of water. In May, it's 175. That's because the sprinklers are all on the water, people are watering their yards, car washes, everything else is more in cycle. So just want to say, people still in town, please conserve your water. It's one of our vital things that we need, and if we run out of water, we're going to have big problems. The next thing is the community garden. The community garden has 44 beds active. I stopped in there. I help them clean up the weeds. I do whatever I can do for them. But there are, I have to get in touch with Glenn, and we got to work a little bit to try to get some other problems taken care of over there. Other than that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Recreation, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. First, to piggyback on the graduation, just to let everyone know, the library will be closing early on Tuesday, the 17th and the 18th for graduation. So check the library schedule. They've got a lot of other great events, but they will be closing early because of the graduation. Our Independence Day celebration, again, Saturday, June 28th, 4:00 p.m. till 9:30 p.m., free inflatable attractions, rock wall, face painting at 4:00 till 8:00. Food trucks featuring multiple types of cuisine, live music from Frontiers, the world's number-one tribute to journey begins at 7:00 p.m., and the fireworks should begin approximately 9:15. So pray for good weather. We're also going to have, in conjunction with the farmer's market on June 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00, a bike rodeo, 10 bicycle games and challenges, free family-friendly event, bring your bikes, scooters, skates, and helmets. And you can register using the information on the flyer on the recreational website. We also have June 25th, lots of things going on. Teen Night from 7:30 till 10:30 at Berks Park. It's going to be an end-of-school-year pizza party and movie night. Registration is required. That's also on the recreation website. And I do want to say Cultural Arts is working on a very active calendar besides for Teen Night. I believe we have a meeting tomorrow to finalize all of that. So once that's all finalized, we'll share the schedule out, and we'll be publishing that so you can attend the many activities and bands and other things, cultural activities that we're going to have on that upcoming schedule. So a lot of things coming out. Let's just hope the rain is done. And I do want to see if I need a motion for one thing that has come up. We do have background checks for those who are going to do volunteers with our, I thought it would probably be a good idea to do a background check, just on all of our boards and commissions, just to make sure we have that. Can we look into that?
Yes, I can start looking into that and presenting something to the council for its consideration or, you know, report back. Or if there's something that requires an ordinance or a resolution, I'll start preparing those with the council's direction.
And I think that would be a good consistent practice across all of our boards and commissions.
Anything else, Council President?
I believe that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. For myself, for those of you who were not aware, there was, the trial about the murder of Councilwoman Eunice Dwanfor was concluded, and there was a conviction. And the sentencing, I believe, will be in July, Glenn. So our thoughts and our prayers and our best wishes go to her family, her daughter, and may that never happen again. It was truly a tragedy. Second thing, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is the annual St. Stans Carnival, which is, which is as much of a town event as it is a parish event. So for those who were unaware, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it's a lot of fun. It's a great deal of fun. With that, we'll go to general discussion and agenda items.
Authorization to amend the shade tree ordinance.
I make a motion to table that.
Second.
Do we need a motion, or we can just pull it? Go.
Well, for the council to act, it has to be a motion in second.
Okay.
Unless it's just tabled administratively.
Okay. Who's that? You might?
Do we need a roll call?
Yep. Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Valka.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarsky.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
That being said, I did ask the attorney to give a report on this. It's the last thing that we need or want to make this a football item. So this is something, I've been sitting up here as mayor for 23 years, and it's very common to go through our ordinances and do housekeeping and bring them current. Jim, if, listen, if you want to go out in the hall and do what you want to do, you might get some attention out here, but you're not getting any here. That being said, as Councilman Palowski once said, and I use it quite frequently, a government is a living document. So that which was done 25 years ago, 30 years ago, 50 years ago, sometimes needs to be brought current. So I ask for a brief report from the borough attorney on shade tree ordinances both in Saraville and in the state. So councillor, if you would, please.
Yes, Mayor. The, yes. The origins for this ordinance that was prepared and was discussed the last meeting was, in fact, that. We're, I'm working with the administration to actually go through our current ordinances, specifically with regard to all of the different boards, commissions, and committees of the borough, to make sure they're up to date and also consistent. We have certain boards that operate differently, or commissions that operate differently than others. They have different rules. So we're looking at those to try to make it more consistent. And when doing so, we're looking at the, specifically with regard to the Shade Tree Commission, it was, you know, discussed on the administration side that, you know, what would it be able to, or would the borough be able to change that and make it more of an advisory-type committee rather than the commission as it is currently forming? There are different commissions and committees throughout the state. Some of the shade trees are, in fact, shade trees are, in fact, advisory committees. They're not commissions. The others are commissions. There have been other municipalities in the state that have moved from commissions back to advisory committee types bodies rather than the commissions under the statute. The interesting part is, with regard to specifically Shade Tree as well, it's not one of those bodies that's required to be, even though it has statutory framework, it's not one that's required to be had by a municipality. Municipality is not required to have a Shade Tree Commission. Most do, or most have an advisory committee in lieu of a commission, but they, most do have some type of Shade Tree body. But it is mixed between whether or not it is a commission operating under the statute or whether it is a separate body that's created by the ordinance. So what I had done is drafted a draft ordinance that included terms that I have normally put in with regard to other advisory committee-type boards, but all of it is in the discretion of the governing body. Even with those, I know one of the points that was brought up at the last meeting was the fact that I had included language in there that said it wasn't subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. And the reason is, is because they aren't. But that doesn't mean that this body, if they decide to go, if they decide to go forward with the ordinance, they can't make it still subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, and they can voluntarily make that body subject to that. That was just a term that I normally include on all advisory committee-type boards or ad hoc-type committees because they aren't legally required to. But you can, as it is a body that's created by ordinance of the governing body, excuse me, can be included. So those are just terms that I came up with, trying to be consistent with what the borough had previously had through the commission, as well as looking to update it based on what I've seen in some of the other municipalities with regard to being more of an, excuse me, advisory versus the statutory commission. So that was really the origins of why it was drafted. What was in that ordinance, it is subject to absolutely the governing body's discussion, comments, revisions, and to make it into a form, if it even goes forward, if they want to change it at all as it is. The reason why is if it's kept as a commission, it is following the statute. So it does have to follow what the statute says. You don't have as much authority over what those terms and conditions are. And that's really where we are, and I understand it's being tabled, which is absolutely fine. But if there is any comments or questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to assist, modify, revise, as deemed to, of course.
Okay, councillor, the chairman of the Shade Tree had reached out to the borough administrator wishing he had questions for you. My understanding is you did contact him, and what was the nature of the conversation?
Yes, we spoke last Thursday before he left on vacation. He advised me about the special meeting that the commission had held on that previous Monday. I was asked to attend that. Unfortunately, I couldn't. I had another engagement that evening because I just found out about it that morning. But I couldn't make it to that meeting to answer questions. So I had offered through the mayor and administration to submit questions to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have come up with at the special meeting. And in lieu of submitting those commissions, we spoke, Art and I spoke on the phone. He was asking me questions about the same, kind of the same ideas. Where's the origin, the origin of the ordinance? You know, what was, you know, some of the background of why it was being presented and what might be the fate moving forward? And I explained the same thing, that this is, that was just a draft that I had come up with, you know, to be circulated and commented on. It was just something that, it had a lot of terminology that I normally use and trying to incorporate, but it's, the governing bodies, the council's, you know, documents. So it can be revised and modified as they deemed fit. You know, he had asked about, you know, the commission itself, and we talked about how, you know, it is, it's a discretionary body. It's not one that's mandated by statute. Even though it is in the statute, it's on a mandated body that the borough has to have. So it is in the governing body's discretion as to whether it keeps it, modifies it, or changes it one way or the other. And then we also spoke about the tree fund and how, yes?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard someone. And whether or not, you know, who has the control of that body, that money, and what's the purposes of it? And we went through, you know, I just explained my reading of the ordinance and how it was designed and, you know, that it is, any expenditure does require, unless it was part of a portion that was budgeted to the committee, that any expenditure still has to go before the council. It is a council fund. It's not, it's not something that the commission can cut checks off of. It does require council approval. It's, but it's something that's under tree, you know, shade tree type of protection or intentions and recommendations. So it is something that they would be recommending to borough how to utilize and spend it.
Are there any questions from the governing body?
I just have really a statement I'd like to make.
I can't hear you, dear.
Okay. What I objected to was, I mean, your explanation sounds really nice, except for the fact that it wasn't something that was advisory. It showed up on the agenda for first reading of an ordinance, and that does not follow our protocols. It should have been on the agenda meeting, and then we should have asked you to do something for the next meeting. That's not the way it worked. I knew nothing about it until I received my agenda on that Thursday. I had no knowledge of it at all, and I am liaison to Shade Tree. So the process was not followed at all. It just showed up on the agenda, on the business part of the agenda as first reading without any discussion with the council prior to that. And that's just not what we're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
I mean, I'm new to the borough, so I can't say about the past practices. I know, I've looked through the borough rules, though, when I came on board to make sure I'm comfortable. There is actually nothing in the borough council rules or any of the ordinances that require agenda sessions or that it be reviewed through agenda. So my experience just in representing municipalities is, part of the introduction process is, when you put it on the agenda for introduction, that is the inception of that conversation with the council. But that's-
Because you, money was expended. That was not approved by the council first. So how can you say that's the normal course of business? You were advised, not by the council, but by somebody. The mayor said that he was the one that did it, so I'll accept, you know, the fact that he's the one that did it. But any expenditures are supposed to be, they start here, not with one person. So it would have to necessarily be discussed at agenda meeting for us to direct you to do this. And you were never directed by the council to prepare an ordinance and put it on the agenda.
You're correct. But I, as the borough attorney, I'm also advised and directed to act by the administration, by the clerk, by the mayor. There's a lot of things that don't come before the council that I have to work on, that I expend money on, that I have to do, including preparing contracts, resolutions, reviewing Oprah requests, providing legal advice, and preparing an ordinance would be the same thing. It doesn't get adapted without the council, and it does require comments. But that would be, if the clerk asked me to prepare an ordinance, or the administrator asked me to prepare an ordinance, or the mayor asked me, or the council asked me to prepare ordinance, that I would still prepare that same ordinance, being the borough attorney. Whether or not that goes through for introduction, adoption, and process, you know, to actually being enacted by the governing body, that's different. That comes before this body, and that is what, you know, the process is, being introduced, being discussed as the council. But for me to actually prepare the ordinance, that's very common for me to do so with directions of any, any part of the-
I, you said this, I've been sitting up here, this is my 20th year, 21st year, and nothing ever gets put onto the business part of the agenda unless it's an emergency, and we all agree, put it on the business part of the agenda even though we didn't discuss it. That's the way it's been done. Now, I'm going to be honest with you, we used to approve all the rules of order at the first meeting, and we used to hand out a book every single year. If it's been changed since I've been off, but it was always in the rules of order, that everything had to be discussed in the-
Yeah, it's not, it might just have been the past practice. It might have just been the past practice of the council. But I, and I apologize right from the first start. I said, I'm new. I don't know what the past practice of the council was. I'm only-
All right. So we're moving forward.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the governing body? Okay, that being said, item two.
Authorization for the tax collector to refund taxes and cancel all subsequently billed taxes due to 100% disabled veteran tax exemption for Block 32.03, Lot 14, and the amount of $8,000-
Hey, Jim, I'm going to ask you to go out, whoever you want to talk to, just bring it out in the hall. I can't have two meetings at the same time. So please, please take all your meetings out in the hall. All right, please don't conduct them because the microphones pick it up. It's distracting. It's annoying, aside from being rude. So you're more than welcome to go out in the hall, turn the light on, shut the door, have all the discussions you want, but not in here, not while the governing body is engaged.
And the amount of $8,532.66. Application for membership as a firefighter received from Richard Ramos Castro, accepted by Morgan Hoes on March 6, 2025, and Anthony Mastro, accepted by Morgan Hoes and Chemical Company at their May 1st, 2025 meeting.
Any objection? Next item.
Request to travel received from Melrose Host Company to attend training on August 6 and 7 in Jersey City.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with Middlesex County for disposal of paint.
Any, if needed, next item.
Authorization to extend groundskeeping contracts with Chris Landscaping and Custom Care Services for one additional year term and increasing the contract rate for Chris Landscaping to $101,852.48.
I just ask, it says increasing it. How much of an increase was that? It just says increasing it, too. Do we know? It's a little over 1%. Thank you.
Next item.
Authorization to purchase 95-gallon automated garbage cans from IPL North America through HGAC contract in the amount not to exceed $41,372.23.
Any objection? Next item.
And request received to hold a block party from the following, residents of Cleveland Ave on July 5 from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Any objection?
An application for a special event received from the South Amboy Saraville Rotary Club to conduct a car show at the VFW on Journey Mill Road on June 29 from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Any objection? Okay, thank you. Business administrators' report?
Mayor, several months ago, we were contacted by Genon, which is the property owner for Jersey Central Power and Light Facility. They're divesting of all of their- Jersey Central Power and Light Facility. They're divesting of all of their holdings in Serval. They approached us with an offer to give us Crab Island, as they no longer have a use for it, and they're not going to have any operations in Serval anymore. It's been reviewed by both the engineering and law department, and there's been no objections from those professionals. So I'm looking for permission to have the borough attorney draw up a ordinance for acquisition or acceptance of this donated real property.
Are there any questions or objections? Next item.
Liabilities with that?
Next item.
Thank you. We got a couple of grants in. Oh, I'm sorry, Glenn, were you done? No, okay. We had a couple of grants come in. DCA grant for Jerry Us Recreational Complex in the amount of $500,000. 2025 Clean Communities Grant in the amount of $103,117.49. And 2025 Recycling Enhancement Grant in the amount of $10,000.
Anything else, Danielle?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Glenn, if you would just go over the grants that became available for the Us Complex that you spent the last several years putting together, please, what the total cost is, and how much of it is non-taxpayer, non-Serval taxpayer money?
Thank you, Mayor. None of the money we're employing for that project is Serval money. The bulk of it is legislative grants through the legislature. And also included in the funding for that is the $1 million we received from Trammell Crowe from the warehouse project, totaling, I think, Jay, were we at 4.5 or something?
4.8, approximately.
4.8 million dollars. And currently, just in answer to an earlier question, the original concept was to do a baseball field, parking improvements, and a multipurpose field. We're still a little short on the funding. So rather than chase our tail and continue to wait to deliver on the project, we did move forward with the bidding for the baseball field and the parking improvements. And this next half a million dollars will start inching us toward the multipurpose field once we have full funding for that.
Okay, good work, Glenn. Thank you. Borough engineers' report. Jay, would you also include an update on the firehouse in your report tonight, please?
Sure. The item listed is Borough Walkway Project. We're receiving bids prior to your next meeting. So if everything's in order, looking for resolution toward that contract at your July meeting. With regard to the firehouse, our office has completed the remediation plans and specifications. They're currently being reviewed by your architect. So once he signs off, then we'll be able to proceed with the bidding of the remediation phase of the project.
Okay. Borough attorneys' report.
Nothing further this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments. Other questions or comments? Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson, Parlin. First, I want to thank Councilman Zabrowski for his comments about changing the ordinance. There's a particular one that I talked about a few times, and I'm glad that's being done. Secondly, I'd like to say this, despite the borough attorney's very convincing argument as to how that ordinance mysteriously showed up on the agenda last week, one thing I've learned from watching things around here in the last few years is nothing happens for the reasons that people think it does. So I opened some information about the John Deere Enhanced Performance Loader that was purchased and later charged to the Tree Bank. And this is what I saw from the documents I received. In May of 2023, the borough ordered the John Deere 624P Loader with the Enhanced Performance. That was in May of 2023. In June of 2023, after it had already been ordered, the council authorized its purchase at a cost not to exceed $368,554. When I looked at the invoice, which was dated December 2023, seven months after it was ordered, it showed the cost was $400,000. And we got a $14,000 trade-in allowance on a 1994. Coming soon that we traded in. So the cost was $386,554. 386,554. The resolution didn't say anything about a trade-in. But the real cost was 386,554. The amount the council approved was 368,554. So there was a little transposition of numbers here. Mary, you know how that works? You ran on the slogan, "Make Serval better, not bigger." Well, that too got transposed over the years, and we made Serval better, not bigger. But somewhere along the line, somebody figured out we had ordered a machine for $386,000 when the council had approved $368,000. Hmm. No problem. The Tree Bank has money. So it was decided that they take money from the Tree Bank after the fact. But as long as they were taking money, why not charge the whole thing to the Tree Bank account? But when I add up the payments deducted from the Trade Tree account, it comes to a little bit more than $420,000. Not 368, not 386, but $421,000. Maybe somebody can look into that and enlighten me on that at the next meeting. So the Shade Tree Commission objected to that money being taken from the Tree Bank and started to ask questions. Everybody knows how we feel about asking questions in this town. By the way, the Shade Tree Commission minutes, I have to compliment them. Their minutes are very thorough. They raised concerns that they weren't allowed to plant trees on Board of Education property. But when residents complained about not enough trees at Camelot, the mayor's aide Zach improperly said that Tree Bank money could be used to plant trees on Kaplan's property, which Kaplan should have paid for. So they caused a problem there. They asked too many questions. You know what happens when you ask questions. So when the Shade Tree starts to ask questions, not play ball without discussion, an ordinance appears on last month's agenda. And let's not forget that a few members of the Shade Tree Commission are also members of the Historical Society. And after the Firehouse debacle, we know what some folks up here think of the Historical Society. This stinks. It's underhanded. It's retribution. And I would say this to the borough attorney's excellent report on how this ordinance came about. If what you say is accurate, if it is so important that we take a look and we do this, then why did you all vote to table it? You all voted to table it because you know, you know, that explanation was pulled out of the air after this ordinance was requested by the mayor because the Shade Tree Commission asked questions about $420,000 taken out of the Tree Bank account. That's why this happened. The other thing I'd like to say is, Mayor, you have one meeting now.
What's that? Jim, your time's up.
Okay, you have one meeting. It still says five minutes. You have one meeting a month.
It's not working.
It's not working?
Yes. Thank you for your comments.
All right. Well, I will overlook the fact that it's not working, and it's cutting into my time. But you know what?
Thank you, Jim. Your time is up.
We get five minutes a month. There used to be two meetings twice a month.
Right.
So that residents could talk about the cable TV franchise ordinance.
Thank you, Jim.
Why we can't have fiber internet company for residents. We could talk about the driveway permits that were issued.
Please have a seat.
We could talk about the progress on the streetlights. There are $108,000 to JC P&L.
Please have a seat, Jim.
Is my time up?
It's been up.
It says five minutes.
Jim, we just went through this. Please sit down.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Ken? Oh, this gentleman right here. Hold on, Ken.
Good evening, Council. My name's Paul Doring. I'm from Morgan. The Morgan section of Serval.
Your street, Paul?
What's that?
What street are you on?
I'm on 37 Dodd Place. That section of Morgan is, if you remember where the Club A was, it's directly across, across the highway. I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood residents. And I was wondering if I could pass around the, some of these photos, the map. If you can look at these photos. The whole issue I'm having is with curbing. There's a street adjacent to Dodd Place and Tyler Street that was just recurved. And from what I understand, Dodd Place and Tyler Street, they won't be done for a long time. The process is explained to me. I'm hoping these pictures might, like, expedite the process, if you can see. And I also, there's a map there. If you look at the map, you can see everything that's highlighted green. All of those streets have been recurved. The ones that are highlighted pink, those, there's only like four, four streets that haven't been recurved. So in any case, it's, the residents, my neighborhood residents are a little frustrated and perplexed as to why the, it's taken so long. It's almost like as though our streets were overlooked. The, all of Morgan is, you know, the streets are pretty good, but our streets are horrendous.
When's the last time they were done, Paul?
They were never curbed.
No, when was the last time they were paved?
Paved? They were paved about five years ago, right before the pandemic, I think.
I'm not sure why the curbs weren't done. Usually, the old rule of thumb was, if we, let's say, mill and pave, that was always the preferred method because it was the least expensive, which means you take the top coat off, and then you lay a new top coat down on the road. So if we just milled and paved, now, this is an old number, we could get about 13 to 15 streets done a year. If we did the curbs, it was, Jay, roughly about half of that? The curbing was that expensive? We will absolutely give this attention, but...
I would appreciate that.
Okay, but, so yourself, and you're on the Fernando Steak side of the road?
Well, Fernando Steakhouse is Morgan Avenue.
Okay.
All right, that's, if you're coming out 35 north.
But you're on that side of 35.
Yes, I'm on that side.
You're on the northbound side.
Okay. It's a small quaint neighborhood. I've lived there since January of 63.
Knocked on the doors there over the years.
And it's just, like, all my neighbors are saying, if you go to that meeting, ask them why. Why was Morgan Avenue recurved and our streets were not?
I don't have an answer for you, but we'll find out. It probably had to do with money. That being said, we adopted the budget recently. So, you know, I don't want to mislead you. Can you leave those here, or?
I can leave these photos here.
I'd like them left with the engineer, with Jay Cornell, please.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll take a hard look at it, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah. My fear is, is if they, if they come in and say, look, we're just going to repave. That's, that's all we can afford.
Right.
If they come in and repave, it's, my neighbors are like, we're never going to get curbs because they're, they're going to come around and rate, I guess they rate the road. Somebody rates it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So if they, if they come up our street, Tyler Street or more, or Dodd Place, and they say, oh, this is just repaved a couple of years ago, that...
You're not gonna, you're gonna wait another 25 years.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at it from the curbing. We'll take a look at getting, were these streets ever curbed?
Never. Now, there's, if you look, if you see in the pictures, there's a lot of makeshift curbs made out of wood. The curbing I have in front of my house, my dad did that 50 years ago. He just put Belgium blocks in there. They're all crooked. There's bricks. There's just, the curbing is atrocious.
We'll take a look at it. We'll, I give you my word, we'll take a look at it.
I really appreciate it.
And we'll communicate with you. Is your contact information in that folder? You have it? Okay.
I'm the one who sent out, in April, I sent out letters with the petition. In fact, I have a petition here. Every resident, you know, on Dodd Place and Tyler Street signed it.
Okay.
So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, the guy down the end, do you know, Jay? You will now.
Yes, I, I talked to Jay when I came in. He explained the process.
Right.
But I'm hoping that, like, the pictures will expedite that process.
Well, we'll go, because it's one of the older sections of town, I'm just grasping for straws right now. There could possibly be some set aside grant. Don't know. But we're gonna, we're gonna find out. It's always best, the rule in Serval, it's always best when somebody else picks up the lunch check. So that's the first place we look. We look for a rich uncle. That being said, we'll try to work something out.
All right. And I'll reach out to my neighbors and let them know that you're sincerely going to try to make something happen.
We take it very seriously.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Paul. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor Ken Olshesky of Serval. I found the discussion on how items get on the agenda to be quite interesting. Not too believable, quite frankly, the question Mary asked. I sat up there for six years. I never heard of an item getting put on the agenda in terms of an ordinance without the approval of the governing body. And talking about agenda items, I heard other things about appointments. The second engineer that was appointed on January 1, there were questions that I heard, overheard, about how that appointment got on the agenda, and who knew about that, and who didn't know about it. And it all goes down to what I've been saying here for months about no questions, that we do not answer questions in the governing body. And what it means really is, we're running a secret government here. And secret government is a corrupt government. You know, I've talked to friends in Monmouth County, Ocean County, Union County, I've talked about local government, and everybody's got their complaints. Don't get me wrong. Nobody said, well, my, my governing body is wonderful. But when I mentioned that our governing body doesn't answer questions, that's where it stopped. Everybody said, oh, wait a minute. I never heard of anything like that. How meetings are run, I talked about this at the last meeting I was at here, and the mayor, which, after he closed the public portion, he made some kind of a reference, and you can correct me afterwards if I'm wrong, Mayor, but that you checked with the veterans, and they're happy with the way you run meetings. I'd like to ask a few questions about what they're exactly happy with. Are they happy when you move from a five-minute to a three-minute public speaking? Are they happy when you called the people who come to these meetings a-holes? Are the veterans happy when you call the people who come to these meetings dopey people with no lives? And were they happy to see when residents came, not out of order, but to ask questions and talk like I'm doing now, that you had a police escort take them to their seats? I think that's what we get when we talk about not answering questions and a secret government. And if you want to talk about veterans, let me tell you, I've got plenty of veterans have been in my family and my wife's family who served in World War II. I have a brother that served in Korea, and I have a brother-in-law that was a prisoner of war in Germany who fought for democracy in this country. And it's a democracy that people like two-bit politicians are trying to take away the freedoms of the public. Democracy is a two-way street where people have a right to talk to their government and have them be accountable and answer questions. You've taken that away, and as I said, two-bit politicians that want to turn around and go and hide under veterans, I'd like to know what veterans, what veterans condone these things that I've said here tonight. I don't think too many. And we got a distinguished veteran who was a councilman here for us, Stanley Drawl, who was a graduate of West Point and a lieutenant colonel in the military, who specifically asked that you continue Zoom meetings for people like in his, in some case, that couldn't come. And that's been ignored, too. I'd like to know these veterans, and I think it's an insult to talk about veterans like that. There are no veterans that I know that are, that are anti-democracy. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Heather?
Hello, Heather Yanoni Poski, 71 Zaleski. I'm up here for a few reasons. First is in regards to the Reflection Arboretum at Felix Park. I did visit it on Monday and noticed that the second half of the walk path down towards the lake, the sides of that walk path are eroding. I have pictures with me. It does present a tremendous potential liability if someone were to fall and hurt themselves. So if you'd like to see those pictures, I can show you on my phone. In addition to that, just... In addition to that, just kind of wanted to talk about this whole Shade Tree thing. I guess my question is why tabled and not just moved on from? For me, it seems a little political if we're tabling it. I know election will be here before we know it. With that also being said, I also, it came to my attention that that truck, that John Deere truck that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars finally got labeled that it was paid for by Shade Tree by having a sticker thrown on it. So I guess the squeaky wheel does get the oil in that respect. I do want to thank you for finally allowing the borough attorney to speak with our chair. I think that was a very nice thing to finally let happen. We have been trying to foster communication for quite a while now. You know, I will just say this on a final note. Part of our function as a Shade Tree Commission is to oversee the Tree Bank and make sure that what is being taken out of that falls within what it should be. And so with that being said, you know, obviously, the governing body will do what it wants to do at the end of the day, but I do encourage you to think of the volunteers that do give their time to Saraville, to the betterment of our parks and our residents. You know, and think what's motivating changing it from a commission that tends to work well unless we're questioning things and change us to an advisory. That's it.
Are there any other questions? Being no other questions? Oh, come on up, Frank.
Do you guys want to see the pictures? I know you saw it. Did you want to see it?
Go ahead, Frank.
Fractor Zino, Canal Street, Saraville, our town. And I'm also a Libra. You know, Libras, they got to be balanced. They can move here and there. But when they're like this, you got to say what's on your mind. I am against, I'm glad you tabled that ordinance for tonight. I think it would be unfair to these great people who do a lot of work. Like for the kids, they got those two programs, they got the ceilings, and they're always doing something. So I think to do what is out there, I think it'd be a wrong thing to do. I disagree. The first Shade Tree was 1940. The ordinance was drawn up 1940. So I think, in my personal opinion, in my humble opinion, that this is just basically two guys having a fallout and it's touching everybody, from you guys to our guys. So I think two people should get together, shake hands over the rail, and let's just move on to bigger and better things. This is not the right way, you know, to do this. And I wish, or I was here today, I'd ask you, Mr. Mayor, or to come to the room and shake hands. Let's just, let's just tell the truth here. There's something going on. It's not about you. I don't have details. I don't want to know details. Let's just move on. Attorney getting in trouble, everybody getting in trouble over nothing. So that's my two cents, and I hope I'm wrong.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any other questions or comments? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Make a motion to close the public?
Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Not yet. A couple of things. Having sat up here first as a councilman in 1997 and then as mayor at the beginning of the century, there was a time where we had four meetings a month. The first one was an agenda meeting and the second one was what we call the action meeting. It was long, it was ponderous. There are certain people who just talk endlessly. So in the interest of expediting things, we went to two meetings a month where we combined the agenda and the action meeting into one. It's worked, in my opinion, it's worked pretty well. The thing that I keep reiterating to people is Saraville has 45,000 people and we're here to provide service. So we're here to provide police, fire, and first aid to make sure that they're properly trained, properly equipped. And they are, and they do a fabulous job. We're here to pick up the trash. You know, our employees are really second to none. So when you look, when you look at the list of services that we provide between first responders, public works, parks, libraries, we have about 70 parks, small, medium, and large. We now have, we now provide the, any kid that wants to play a sport in Saraville just signs up. We have a fabulous recreation department. We're in the service business. We provide services. As I said, all of these aspersions that we're doing something illegal, immoral, et cetera, et cetera, it's the same people that could pontificate endlessly about nothing. And what I always recommend to anybody that thinks that there is something going on that is dishonest, go right to the prosecutor. Let them know your fears, and we will deal with the prosecutor if they ever come here. This is a very straight governing body. Everybody up here does it for a little bit over 100 bucks a week, and it's a service. That being said, as far as the veterans go, in my office, my chief of staff is Ken Kelly. Ken Kelly was a medic in Vietnam. Ken Kelly gave aid to the wounded and the dying. There is no finer man than Ken Kelly. And we have, and the veterans of Saraville are second to none. So when there is a complaint about veterans not being serviced, he is also the head of the Veterans Alliance. I go to Ken Kelly, he looks into it, and he gets back to me and lets me know if there's an issue. And if there's an issue, we address it. So anyone who wants to make hay out of what they perceive is ignoring the veterans, they need to go down and talk to Ken Kelly. And bring Stanley Drawl with you because he's Ken's best friend. Secondly, the second person I have down there is Andrew Ozog. He is a Polish immigrant that came to this country with $100 and he made a life. He met a girl, he married her, they had a son, who is a West Point graduate, who is currently serving in the United States Army as an Apache helicopter pilot who teaches at West Point, as does his wife, who is a West Point graduate and teaches at West Point. So anybody, any phony baloney fake patriot who wants to make or try to make hay that somehow this group of people is ignoring veterans is completely lying. Second thing, this equipment for, that's used by the Borough for Shade Tree, for Borough issues, this was purchased under the last mayor. I'm not going to go backwards. I'm only going to go forward. It was a piece of equipment that's used for, I guess, landscaping? Is that what it's used for? It's a payloader. Okay. So we have, we have a piece of equipment that's used to help the people of Saraville. And I'm not going to get, I'm not going to split hairs on this, who has control over the piece of equipment? The people of Saraville have control over the piece of equipment. Jim, if you can't, go out in the hall if you can't, if you've got a catcall. And then the last thing I have, just so it's on the record, our friend Jim Robinson, as far as I know, is the campaign strategist for the Democratic Party this year. And he's desperately looking for an issue, in my opinion. So there is a lot of looking around and trying to develop some kind of scandal so that he can run a campaign for the two Democratic candidates this year. And I just needed that on the record so that everyone knows where this stuff is coming from. Sit down. Sit down. Listen, Jim, rather than, rather than make you seem like the martyr that you want to be, please sit down. So all those things being said, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.